We'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. It is the appointed hour. We have a quorum present. I would ask if people would please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. This meeting will be conducted in compliance with Nebraska's open meeting laws, a copy of which is on the back wall. We also have another interesting little wrinkle this morning. We have a film crew from NACO that is going to be watching us this morning and maybe coming in to do close-ups of some of the prettier faces on the board. We'll see as the meeting goes along.
I don't know if there's any on the board.
Mary Ann's not here today.
Behind the board. Which NACO?
Uh...
Nebraska.
Nebraska, okay.
Okay. So with that, could we please call the roll for the Board of Equalization?
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Thank you. Item A is the minutes from the Board of Equalization meeting, January 14th. Item B is calling for one week from today is the next meeting date. What is the will of the Board?
Motion to approve adjournment.
Okay. Questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, could we please vote?
Commissioner Boyle's vote will not appear on the screen due to technical difficulties, but he votes yes, as do the rest of the commissioners present. Motion passes.
Thank you. Citizen comments? Is there anybody wishing to address the Board of Equalization on any item not on the agenda? If not, we will go down to the resolutions. We have a number of resolutions in D and E.
Motion to approve adjournment.
Is that D through H? And is the seconder agreed?
Yes.
Okay. The motion is for D through H and adjournment. Does anybody have any questions or comments on any of these items? If not, could we please vote?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. This Board wears many hats. As the token farmer on the Board, I always enjoy the Weed Control Authority Board meetings, but I'm probably the only one who gets a kick out of those. Could we please have the roll called and we will convene as the Noxious Weed Control Authority?
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Thank you. The first item for consideration is the minutes from the Tuesday, November 26th meeting of the Weed Control Authority. Would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve adjournment.
Any questions or comments? Could we please vote on that?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Citizen comments? Does anybody wish to address the Weed Control Authority? As the only farmer in the room, I don't expect a whole lot of people to... Good morning, Mike. Resolution placing special assessments on property in Douglas County. What are we up to, Mike? How are things going?
Oh, very good. I appreciate the sentiment that you are the farmer on the Board.
[laughing]
I also appreciate the experience on the Board. As I put together my annual reports, there's a Board roster and you look at the experience up and down. And I've been giving reports to the Board for 12 years now and a lot of the same faces when I started are still here, so I appreciate the experience that's on the Board. It predates me. My predecessor, Bob Ellis, gave the presentation to this Board, too. So this is a very well experienced Board, which I appreciate. I'm going to talk about a few items here based on my own experience. This first picture here, you have one of our Weed Control seasonal temps. He happens to be my height, actually a bit taller. He just graduated high school. This is Caleb. He's six foot tall, mowing that patch of thistles in that backyard.
It looks to me like he's in over his head.
Yeah, he is. This would probably take him about, oh, to get everything, about 15, 20 minutes with that walk behind mower. You're looking at about a quarter of a million seeds produced by these thistles right here. These properties like this are reported to my office, the Weed Control Authority. Landowners have 10 days to abate the weeds, control those noxious weeds. If you imagine the impact of... This is just that screenshot. I counted the plants. You don't have to count them. You can trust my experience. That's about 250,000 seeds from those thistle plants because each one of those produces 20,000 to 30,000 seeds per plant. And those, as Claire knows, those produce a seed bank. If those are allowed to get into the ground, those produce a seed bank for about... I've seen, gone on the same road sides every year, controlled all the thistles, and I'm still going back there five and six years. And so you can imagine the impact for the surrounding landowners, which you can see are those are very well maintained properties.
But just mowing those thistles does nothing?
Nothing to eliminate the seeds. They're all still there.
Correct.
They're all still viable.
Correct. So what we do is we'll knock all the thistles down, and then when that regrowth comes, then we will spray the stalks, which minimizes the herbicide impact and also controls the seeds, which you're talking about. Use a broadleaf herbicide, so it doesn't spread to those neighboring areas. And so this will be one of the properties that will be on inspection the following year.
Got it.
Make a point that these properties are reported to us. We don't have the... It's myself and one inspector. We don't have the time to go out and look for these areas. We're relying on the public to, one, maintain their own properties and control their own weeds, but also we have limited resources to do so. On our road sides, just to point out, this is a bit dark here, but you have thistles. Those are the taller things in the photo. On our road sides, we are doing selective control of the thistles. And a lot of times, we are cutting and then spraying the remainder of the plant to minimize the herbicide impacts. What we want to do is not spray... Douglas County Weed Control no longer does any broadcast spraying of road sides because we want to promote the competition. One of the best ways that Nebraska Extension has shown through research is to get rid of thistles is to increase the competition of good plants. Some of the other plants around this thistle would be the milkweeds, which are good for pollinators. So we want to leave those plants for the pollinators, which are a valuable thing for our food production in the state as well. This is right in my backyard. This is the Shields right away, the 168th and Dodge. I was spraying musk thistles, so this is a good transition. So I sprayed the previous plant in the roadside, and I looked down into the ditch at 168th and Dodge, and the arrow is pointing to phragmities. That's the... It's another six or eight feet tall, so we're, once again, Commissioner Kraft, we're in over our heads with weeds again. And so what's the big deal about this growing at 168th and Dodge? Well, this produces a seed head, which you can see the darker brown on top of the plant that is viable seed, which can spread to Nebraska's wetlands and rivers and change the ecology, change the river system in a sense where you're going to create permanent sandbars and flooding and reduce water for agriculture and things like that. So Nebraska has been very... Got on it right away in 2008, so about 10 years ago, phragmities became a noxious weed. And so we're looking to eliminate seed sources like this, getting back to those river systems. I've seen it spread by wind primarily and by wildlife and also machinery. So there's a concrete recycling for Department of Roads at 108th and F Street, and they have piles of materials. And they also have, right in the wetland in the middle there, they have phragmities growing up in the piles of concrete. So you can find this almost anywhere. I had the opportunity to go to New York this year, to upstate New York, for a national conference on weed control. This is Lake Moreau, and it's hard to see the lake because of the phragmities. This plant has no beneficial use for wildlife. Lake Moreau left this here for a few years because they had originally thought that there was beneficial uses for wildlife, for waterfowl and things of that sort, to use this plant. But there's no beneficial uses for wildlife. There's no ducks. There's no wildlife in there. So they've kind of have a late start on that, but they're... This is one of the reasons why we're aggressively targeting small patches before they become large patches.
Can I interrupt for a quick second here, Mike? Commissioner Kraft?
When you said that... Excuse me. When you said that you have to go back and spray the next year after mowing, do we assess the property owner... Yes.
Good, good point. I meant to make that point. So the special assessments that you approved today are unpaid Weed Control cost bills. So we assess the cost for the services and for our time and also for... There's a $100 administrative fee attached to that as well.
Okay. So future services such as spraying the next year are not in that assessment?
So, no, any future... We have the land... Douglas County Weed Control gives the landowner first opportunity, those 10 days, to manage the property.
Okay. Then the next question is, a lot of people don't know who to complain to. So if they complain to the city of Omaha, do we have an understanding with the hotline and whoever else that... Yes?
Yes, those are routed to my office. Anything that's outside of the city limits is routed to my office for Weed Control.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep. So there's the other half of the lake, so they are working on it. Nebraska benefits from a state law that says landowners are responsible for the weed control, the noxious weed control on their property. New York is not so fortunate. Fortunately for this, this is state ground, but on any private property in New York, I learned that it's all completely voluntary. So public agencies, entities can't suggest that the landowner take action, but if there's noxious weeds that will impact your neighbors, it's totally up to the landowner to say yes or no. And then you have... If you ever tour New York, there's a lot of phragmities and a lot of other noxious weeds. So I had a hard time finding a field of vision that didn't have noxious weeds. Yep. With that, I'll conclude the presentation. So I just wanted to give a couple of points to the Board and make the point that the special assessments that are adopted today are in large part because of Weed Control costs that I showed in the first slide of the thistles and things like that are assessed on private property and become tax liens if they are unpaid after 60 days. Yeah.
Very good. Anything else for the good of the cause? Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I should know this, but I don't. I've got to admit. Maybe PJ Morgan can tell me as a former mayor, but a... [laughing] What is the policy with the city? I mean, we used to have so many problems with the city and weeds and everything. Do you have... What kind of relationship do you have outside of getting... What prompted this was being referred by, I assume, the complaint line in the city. Do you have a relationship with the folks who cut the weeds?
Yeah, I have a very good relationship with the city. In the Weed Control Plan, it's one of my annual goals to work with the city on their lakes, on their... They have a large amount of responsibilities, as you know, on their parks and recreation. So one of the things that we work cooperatively with the city is identifying those noxious weeds on Lake Zirinsky, Carter Lake, and that's all in the control plan. I work cooperatively with them. I meet with their inspectors every year so they know who I am, so we can have a good understanding of... I know where their inspectors are in the city and because they're broken up into territories, east, south, northwest.
Okay.
So I have a good understanding of where they're at, and I work... We actually shared a contractor this year as well, where we used a forestry mulcher, and that was in the control plan, too. So we were sharing contractors, so we have a very good working relationship back and forth on that. So we shared a contractor, a forestry mulcher, this year on areas that were difficult to mow and manage, that had nuisance weeds on them. And so very good familiarity both ways.
And when you levy a fine against someone, is it difficult to collect, or do you work with the county attorney, or with whom do you work?
The treasurer becomes the collection agency.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And so it becomes a tax lien, and then so when those taxes are paid and the Weed Control liens are paid at the same time.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks. Any other questions? I would entertain a motion to approve items two through five.
So who?
Does that conclude adjournment?
Yes.
Very good. Questions or comments to any of these?
Was the motion with it by Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Yes, seconded by Commissioner Morgan.
Hey, and give us one moment, please.
Sure.
Yes.
Someday, they will add burc cucumber to the list.
Mr. Chair, I was going to suggest that you invite the film crew to walk around. I think they're intimidated by coming down here.
No, I don't think they're intimidated. They said they'll be...
Okay, well, come on down. Roll 'em anywhere you want to go.
They said they'll be wandering around as our meeting goes on.
Okay. We are ready for the vote.
Okay. Everybody, please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Very good. Keep up the good work. That concludes the Board of the Noxious Weed Control Authority. We will now convene as the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Could we please have the roll?
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, if I could have a moment of course.
Commissioner Kraft, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Yesterday was a day of somber remembrance. The United Nations designated International Holocaust Remembrance Day as yesterday. It coincides with the anniversary of the liberation of the Auschwitz-Burkenau concentration camp, and this year is the 75th year anniversary. And as a Jewish person, it breaks my heart when I hear these people who deny that the Holocaust occurred. Their rationale is so flimsy, so... Their rationale is blatantly anti-Semitic. There is no other way to look at it. Their rationale is an expression of hate, and there is too much hate in this world. It is... Hate is learned. If you watch babies, you can see love is innate, but hate is learned. So how do we overcome that? We've been trying. And as far as genocide, it's going on all throughout the world in many ways and has. And we cannot allow that to happen. We sometimes pay more attention to the extinction of an extinct... I'm sorry. Extinction of an animal than of a tribe or an ethnicity. And I do get emotional over this, so I apologize for my hesitance, but yeah, I don't know anybody who is sane can deny that the Holocaust happened. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Boyle?
As a non-Jewish person, I spoke to Mr. Kraft this morning and asked him if he was going to bring this up because it's something I think that needs to be spoken about, and I'm very glad that he did so clearly. I just want to say that I agree with him completely about hatred of other people is taught. It isn't something that you go out and look for yourself. And so we need to be very careful with our speech. I was reading about the Holocaust, and one of the points really stuck in my mind is that the Holocaust didn't begin with violence. It began with work. It started with words.
Very good. Thank you. Silver. Appreciate your thoughts and perspectives.
Thank you both.
Thank you both. Okay. This brings us back to the beginning of the Board of Commissioners meeting. The first item for consideration is the minutes and claims, the minutes from last week's meeting and claims through today's date. What is the pleasure of the Board?
To approve adjournment.
Questions or comments? Did you get both commissioners, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you.
All right, could we please vote on one A and B then?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Incidentally, we have... The building commission has ordered a new voting system. We're trying to address Commissioner Boyle's inability to vote, but... Okay. This brings us to the consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda I would like to pull that are not ready for action yet today, and that is items G and I.
What is it again?
Item G and item I are both not quite ready for final action. I've been asked if we could pull both of those from consideration for today.
Do you need a motion or not?
Well, all I need is a motion to approve the consent agenda, less those two items.
So without G and I, correct?
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions on item D, which is D1, approval of the First Amendment to the sublease agreement between CenterPoint and Douglas County, Nebraska, for space utilized by the social detoxification services. And I think Ms. Glassnap is here. I just wanted to get in the record essentially what that is and what that does at CenterPoint. So if you could give us a brief overview of...
I can... I mean, this is a three-month extension to our lease. The building may be in the process of being sold, and we want to make sure that we have a valid lease in place should that happen.
Sure.
And so that's all this is, is a three-month extension to the lease for the property.
So just briefly, this service that we provide, the social detoxification service, could you briefly tell us and the public what that is?
Certainly. Sherry Glassnap, Director of the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center. Approximately three years ago, the Detox Community Mental Health Center took over, as you remember, Catholic charities chose to no longer provide social detoxification services. The social detoxification services are provided in the same facility that they have always been provided in. It consists of both involuntary, which we have historically referred to as civil protective custody, and voluntary services. We have 10 beds of involuntary services, which, again, we refer to typically or historically as civil protective custody. We have 16 beds available for social detoxification services for voluntary individuals seeking treatment for detoxification.
And CenterPoint is what entity?
CenterPoint is a nonprofit organization out of Lincoln, Nebraska. And when Catholic charities decided that they no longer wanted to provide substance use services, the RFP from Region 6 Behavioral Healthcare came out in two parts, the detoxification part of the RFP and then residential services part of the RFP. So the building is subleased, is leased from CenterPoint, from Catholic charities to CenterPoint. And then we sublease our portion of the building from the CenterPoint facility. The overall thought is that CenterPoint, when they went into the lease with Catholic charities, is that they wanted to buy the facility and then continue to sublease to us. And they are in the process of doing some things to the building, working on getting the funding to be able to purchase that building. So CenterPoint will own the building, and then we will lease our portion of the building from CenterPoint. The reason we are requesting the extension is to give them time to continue to work toward purchasing, and they're hoping to be able to do that by May, and this will extend our agreement with them through May. And then we will go into a new agreement with them at that time, and we'll work with Jerry Leahy with Public Properties, Kristen Lynch from the County Attorney's Office to make sure that that's appropriate.
That's great. So citizens of our community can... Who have substance abuse problems can go to the detox center and get help for essentially free?
Absolutely. It's... We look at things based on an individual's income. Region 6 pays us to provide those services at this time, and you need to meet the Region 6, the guidelines that are set by Region 6, for financial eligibility for that program. So low-income individuals receive those services. They're paid for by Region 6. If there needs to be additional funding, obviously subsidized by the county, as all Community Mental Health Center services are.
And the address of this facility?
Oh, you got me on that one.
Approximately. I kind of know where it is, too.
If you know where the Sienna Francis House is, most individuals know where that facility is located. We are right behind their facility, and I apologize. I can get you the address. I don't... I do not know that off the top of my head.
Right smack in the middle of the campus.
Jerry Leahy's going to have that for me. I've been saved, I hope.
The address?
Thank you.
1490 North 16th Street.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Say it again. 1490 North 16th Street. 1490 North 16th Street in Omaha. In Omaha, across from...
Sienna Francis House. Very close to Sienna Francis House.
And is this facility open 24/7?
It is open 24/7, holidays, weekends. People come in at 2:00 a.m. to get assistance from the program.
This is really one of the best things that Douglas County does. Thank you for this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
As long as you're up here, I want to ask, what does the city contribute to this, the operations of this facility?
Currently, the contract with the city is a... I don't want to give an exact number. It's around 80, between $80,000 and $90,000 a year. The majority of the funding for both the involuntary and the voluntary services currently come from Region 6 Behavioral Healthcare. Those are state dollars that go to the region, and then the region contacts with... contracts with providers, and that's the majority of the funding.
Okay. Well, don't... As a matter of fact, isn't this facility used primarily by the Omaha Police Department to bring in people?
Approximately 98% of the individuals are brought in by the Omaha Police Department. That is correct.
All right. And so they're getting the deal for 80 grand, and the region's paying for it, though, so it's all tax dollars anyway, isn't it? Or is it federal?
There is both state and federal funding that comes from the state through the region to us. Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll continue doing that. We'll see how it works out. I thought the city was balking at one time about...
We're in... We are having ongoing negotiations with the city about what is the appropriate split. What is unfortunate about this is that the overall cost is escalating greatly beyond what we anticipated when we got into the business, thanks to the state.
Right.
Enforcing regulations that have never been enforced, extra scrutiny and saying we are no longer allowed to lock doors unless we have a security guard sitting there. And I mean, the costs are going to go up greatly because of the state. I view the city as our partner in this. I'm not out... I want to work with them.
Right.
I don't view the state as a partner. I view... I view the state as an impediment, that they're trying not to help us with this, and they're pretty good at that. So we will have ongoing negotiations with the city, but at the end of the day, they're our partner, and I want to make sure that we continue providing this very important service. But unfortunately, thanks to the state, the costs will be going up.
Right. Have we considered giving it all to the city?
You can come to the next round of negotiations.
Well, I mean, you know, I was involved with the Joint City-County Health Department, and I ended up giving it to the city when I was in the mayor's office, or to the county.
Yes, yes, we've been thanking you ever since.
They're the ones who are benefiting from the service. Maybe we should have them pay you directly to run it and let it go from there. Have them be the full, have them be the entity that owns it or owns the responsibility.
I would be happy to let them if they had any interest. I don't think that they would...
Oh, they don't have any interest. But that doesn't mean we can't give it to them.
I think it'd be nice to have Mike assist in this area.
Agreed, agreed.
I do.
I thought Marianne was tough on negotiations, but...
Well, see, I'll bring one of those guys.
Okay.
Bring the guy with the gun into the room. No, seriously, I think we ought to be talking about that, and some other things too as well. But I, you're doing a terrific job. You stepped in when the Catholics walked out, which I was very upset about, and I told them so. But in any event, you're doing a terrific job under a lot of pressure for particularly the money and also the state's interference.
Yep.
Thanks.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Just one other quick question on item E, approving and consenting Douglas County election commissioner Brian...
We're still on item D, if I may.
Oh, sorry.
May we?
No.
Get this one settled first. Commissioner Kraft.
The city puts in about $80,000 a year. And how much does the county, from our taxpayers, from our general fund, put into this?
The Douglas County taxpayer, there are, there are pass-through dollars that come from specifically from Douglas County to the region, and that's approximately $206,000 a year. I would need to go back and look at the financials specifically for the detoxification program to look at if there are any additional county dollars that help subsidize that program.
So the only dollars that the county's paying are the pass-through dollars to Region 6?
I would like to go back and look at the budget to assure that there are not any additional funds that are helping subsidize the program.
You mentioned this is for low income. What if one of us were to walk in?
So what we would do, if, let's first say, I walk into the Social Detoxification Program and I meet the qualifications, I'm intoxicated and I need assistance, what they would do is they would look at my income, and we have a sliding fee scale, and they would charge me per day for that service to be provided since I don't meet the income guideline. And that would probably be approximately $244 a day, which is what we are currently reimbursed for by the state.
And do we have that situation happen often?
I wouldn't say often, but it does happen on occasion.
And when it happens, do we have a means of collecting that money? And do we collect it?
Not always, but one of the things that I will tell you is shortly after we took over the program, we had an anonymous donation of $1,000 that was dropped off at the facility. And I think a lot of times, individuals choose to or like to do things anonymously when they receive services. So we do have those things happen.
Very good. Commissioner Duda and I toured the place, and it was well worth the time spent.
Very insightful.
Yeah, very insightful. It gave me a perspective that I did not have before. And I don't think, if other commissioners have not gone through there, they should arrange and schedule a tour.
Agreed.
We would be more than happy to do that. I will say Terry Speck is the director of the program, and she does a phenomenal job with that program, and she assures that the individuals we serve are treated with dignity and respect. She has a great team.
Claire and I. And when Claire and I were there, we talked to some of the people, and they were impressed with the quality of service we are providing. So yes.
And I got to say, we're so lucky to have somebody like Terry Speck, who's just absolutely dedicated and devoted to this job. There's a number of county employees. It's been a revelation to me through the years how much this is, for so many people, it's their personal mission. You know, they aren't here just for the job. And Terry is so very good at what she does down there, and we're truly lucky to have her.
We are blessed.
Any further questions on this item, on item D, the detox center and the lease extension? If not, I will move the conversation. Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you.
We will move on down to item E. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. This is approving and consenting Douglas County election commissioner Brian Cruz, as authorized until January 1st, 2022, to enter into usage of rental agreements with designating, when designating polling places for elections. And I don't know if there's a representative of the election commissioners here, but this comes up every election cycle, whether or not we are maintaining, increasing, or decreasing the number of voting sites in Douglas County. And that would be my only question. I don't know that public property is involved with this at all. This is an election commissioner function, but that would be my question. And at some point, I guess I'll follow up with Mr. Cruz relative to that. It's important that we maintain as robust access to voting sites as possible to increase the participation of our citizens in the election cycle. So that's my question on that. I don't know if anybody knows relative to the number of voting sites for the 2020 election cycle, if that's increased, decreased, or stayed the same.
I'm sorry, there's nobody here to answer that. Would you like to lay this item over until you get that information, or...
Commissioner Teresa York. I can't directly answer that specific question as to the number of polling places, but I could provide a little history, and perhaps that would be enough. I can't say. So several years ago, I think it was in 2016, we put these templates before the board, and they went ahead and passed them. And the reason for that was that election commissioner Cruz sometimes has a short, sometimes a polling place changes their mind. He has to get a new polling place. There wasn't always time to bring that contract back before the board. So to provide him a more latitude, this board authorized him to enter into a template agreement for those polling places. And this facilitated him acquiring new or just renewing with an already helpful site. And so that last resolution that the board passed had an end date. And so we're bringing back this exact same templates before the board today, asking that you would allow the election commissioner to have that flexibility in acquiring polling places and approving these templates for him and authorizing him to execute them.
I mean, you know, with that clarification, I don't have any problem for us moving ahead with this today. But I think I would like to hear from Mr. Cruz relative to that issue of accessibility and number of precincts and voting sites at some point in the near future. I'll follow up with him myself, but I don't have any problem with us going ahead and voting on this today. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I want to try to interject that I have spoken to him about this, and he does not want to repeat what's happened in the past, where there were some that were cut and closed and things that really caused a lot of turmoil. He is prepared to tell us where they are in advance and to make changes if it's necessary. They must be accessible. One thing he did point out is that the voting by mail has increased dramatically, and, but there are a lot of people who don't like to vote by mail. They like to walk in and do their thing in the polling place and see their ballot go into the box and so forth. So in any event, he is, he is working on that. One other interesting thing he told me during this conversation is that the, one of the boxes that they have for the ballots, there's one out in front of this building, and there's one at the Charles B. Washington Library, which is where I always go. And anyway, they opened it up to take the ballots in, and it was filled with wedding invitations. And someone thought it was a mailbox. They didn't bother talking to the people. They just picked up the invitations and took them to the post office.
I hope the wedding wasn't last week.
No, it was timely, or they would have done something. But it was filled with invitations to the wedding. Anyway, they're going to make sure, and of course, the neat thing about the mail is that it's, and we're trying to get some of that provision applied to Douglas County so that we have the authority to do all of our, that's very expensive to have these polling places. And we've been sued, you know? We had a woman that was sitting on a chair that we, somebody had supplied, either us or the church or somebody, and it collapsed. And we paid dearly for that incident. So there's a lot of things going on that we could, you know, expenses we could avoid with all the people and all the rest of it if we used mail.
Thank you.
But I'll see that he'll be in to explain that.
Is there any further questions on anything from either the board or the public on any items on the consent agenda? Mr. Clerk.
Not a question, just a clarification on the item. We're speaking of item E. Your backup documentations, or the documentation you guys have, does have the rental agreement. But on the website, actually, it only has the agenda request form and the resolution. So just a note for the public, if anybody wanted to see a copy of the template agreements we're talking about, the clerk's office has that and can provide that.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate that. Further questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? If not, then I would ask if we could please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We move on to recognition and proclamations, although we'll be passing over the first one for Tom O'Connor, who is out of town today, and we would like him to be present when we do that. So we will move on to, we have two of them to recognize. The Mary Overton, retiring from the Department of General Assistance after 10 years of service, and Jacqueline Bear, retiring from the Health Center after 22 years of service. Are either of these women present? Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second, a little smart alec going on.
Real quick, I didn't catch the second.
Commissioner Kraft.
Then we're in just B and C, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Only B and C.
All right. All right, we are, we are ready. Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Citizen comments for the county board. Is there anybody wishing to address the county board on any items that are not on the agenda? This is your opportunity to do so. Good morning.
Susan, can you pull the mic a little? Sure.
There you go. Thank you so much.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Omaha, Nebraska. The Douglas County Board learned about the refugee resettlement consent issue at the December Nebraska Association of County Officials Conference, which led to it being added as an emergency item on the December 17th, 2019 agenda. The letter consenting to more refugees was voted on with little discussion. This item was not on the published agenda, so citizens had no opportunity to attend the meeting and express their concerns, and that's why I'm here today. The intent of the President's executive order was to enhance the state and local involvement in refugee resettlement. The federal government would resettle refugees only where both the state and local governments have consented to participate in the resettlement program. In the past, the people most impacted by refugee resettlement weren't being consulted and were left out of the resettlement process. I don't think the UN, the State Department, and nongovernmental private contractors should be determining the destinies of our neighborhoods and communities. The private contractors are funded, for the most part, by taxpayers. According to 2015 and 2016 990 forms, four of the nine contractors received over 90% of their funding from taxpayers. Should the UN be telling us who is going to live in our country at our expense? Refugee resettlement is a program most people know very little about. Do the governors, mayors, and counties who consented to more refugees know anything about the history of the program or how it works? Were informed decisions made that aligned with the public interest based on facts rather than feelings and emotions? Is Nebraska at the mercy of the UN, unelected bureaucrats, and private contractors? Do we know how many refugees we will receive, from what countries, where they will be, where they will be placed, and at what cost? The executive director of the Multicultural Coalition said she expects 300 to 400 refugees, with about 100 of them being resettled in Grand Island. I have not seen any other information as to numbers of refugees. Refugee resettlement should be about what is best for the refugees as well as the receiving countries and communities. U.S. humanitarian assistance reaches millions of refugees and displaced people worldwide every year. Government policy should shift away from relocating refugees to the United States. The costs, both fiscal and social, outweigh the benefits provided to a relatively small portion of the overall refugee population. By focusing our humanitarian efforts on overseas assistance, the United States can help many more vulnerable individuals. We should help as many people as possible with our limited resources. The U.S. should provide direct assistance to refugees within or near their country of origin rather than resettling them in the United States. It is more cost-effective and safer for the American public than bringing refugees here. American taxpayers are already overburdened with the high costs of immigration. America is currently faced with massive budget deficits and a tense global security climate. We should be helping these people in or near their own regions where the language, religion, culture, and values are the same. Governors who opposed the resettlement of Syrian refugees five years ago due to security concerns are now consenting to more refugees even after the terror attack, December 6th, at the Pensacola Naval Air Station. We have been assured that the vetting process has been enhanced, and we have nothing to fear, thanks to extreme vetting. I think a supposedly-vetted Saudi military trainee killing three people is proof our vetting process is dangerously inadequate. Where is the wisdom in bringing Iraqi Sunnis and Iraqi Shiites, who have been killing each other for centuries and placing them in the same U.S. cities? Some of the same clans who fought each other in Somalia are dividing along the same lines in our neighborhoods. Why bring civil wars and tribal warfare into our communities? As to we are a nation of immigrants, never in our history did we welcome hateful or disruptive ideologies. It is not anti-immigrant to be pro-American. Any decisions on refugee resettlement should be based on what is in the best interest of public safety, our communities and schools, and Nebraska taxpayers. Thank you.
Good morning.
Hi, my name is Karen McGinnity, and I also am bringing up refugees. I'm just speaking from experience because I worked in ESL at Burke. Few concerns that I have is I saw all the money being used for the ESL program.
Where do you work, ma'am?
What's that?
E-N-S-L. What's that?
English Second Language.
Oh, okay, for the abbreviation.
So, right.
Where was that you worked?
I'm sorry, what?
Burke or somewhere?
It was at Burke High School.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't understand all the acronyms.
Just a few examples that I had that are of concern. I see where all the money is going for the ESL program and not for the Omaha Public Schools students. If Little Johnny's having problems, there isn't money, but they had paros for the English Second Language students. Meantime, we are building more schools, and it keeps, and our bonds with, what, the last 10 years is almost a billion dollars for OCS, never mind the 800 million pension shortfall. We just keep building more schools. Well, then the scores are so low, and parents are frustrated because their children's scores aren't. So they move out to Elkhorn, they move out to Greta Bennington. In turn, we're building more schools out there because of this concerning program. Few examples I had, the day of 9/11, I had two students cheering that day from the Middle East. That's our tax dollars at work. This is what we want to bring here. I also had a child with, I didn't know, that I sat by him every day, tutored him. For three months, the school nurse kept ringing, trying to get him to go into the office. And of course, due to HIPAA, she couldn't tell me what was going on. And of course, due to HIPAA, she couldn't tell me what was going on, and he would fight her, he would say, "I'm not going," and I mean, she basically had to drag him out of there. Well, finally, she blew up one day, and she just, I said, "What is going on?" She goes, "He has active TB, and he refuses to take his meds." Nice, huh? That's not good for me or the other students there. And who knows, when he went home, spring break or summer, he was probably not taking his medication. A few of the other problems that we had, the, a lot of them did not respect women from their culture, they did not respect it. I know the vetting, they're telling us you're vetting them. These, these kids came from villages, their biggest concern was if a lion would come eat them. They did not have computers, there's no vetting, who do you ask Uncle Bob about? It's just gotten to the point, we cannot keep doing this, we keep importing more poverty, more poverty, when we have so much here, we're not looking out for our own kids, their scores, and I think you really, everybody wants to sit there and say, "Well, you're racist if you don't want this." No, we have people here of all races that are hurting, and we are not helping them. But I just want to thank you for your time, and just think about it, instead of the feel-good, what they're going to do, we got to look out for the safety of the taxpayers. And I guess there's one little article, I don't know if everybody saw it, in April, I have a lot of friends that are policemen, are telling me that the Sudanese, their gangs are raising havoc with them. Well, in April, there was an article, there was 150 Sudanese, part of the Tripset gang. Now, do we want to keep importing more of this? I, I just don't understand. But thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Karen. Would anybody else like to share anything with the board at this time? Good morning, Larry.
Good morning. Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. I'd like to reinforce what the two ladies before me said, but I'd like to expand, hopefully I won't repeat. But I'm going to start with this, I've watched the last week practically every minute of the debates on the so-called impeachment. This assault on the United States Constitution. And I have to say that the founding fathers were correct, that the passions of the people need to be mediated by that deliberative body in the Senate. They can do that better than the House of Representatives, the House is the people's passion. Well, we're seeing the passion of the politicians right now, and it boils down to this, who is lying and which side is lying? And who wants to be elected next? This is totally out of whack with what we, the people, who are in control of this thing is, had in mind, and what the founding fathers had in mind. Now, to the topic of refugee resettlement, immigration, and illegals. A lot of what I've heard in those last few days point out one thing, that we now have a president that is trying to correct a lot of problems, because Congress didn't do their job. Congress didn't set up these programs properly. But they're a little bit like the local bodies. Now, don't laugh, this is only to represent three branches of government. But there's a shell game to three branches of government, too, as to which one controls the other. Founding fathers said neither one of those controls the other, but you see going on right now that they think they do. Well, the state thinks they control this county, the county thinks they control the city. It gets mixed up, some of these rules and regulations get mixed up. We don't know sometimes whether that rule came from the state, or from the city, or from the county. They all get mixed together a little bit. And why? Because you're probably listening to nongovernmental associations and associations of county officials, which on December 17, or later, I'm sorry, Mr. Rogers told us about this later, but on December 17, there was a discussion of refugee resettlement. The executive order came out in September 26. So I'd like to know, and I think the citizens need to know, why there was such an emergency on January 7 or January 14, to hurry up and pass this proclamation? This is an emergency. I went to this dinner thing over the weekend, or this lecture over the weekend, and we have to do this now. We have to send a letter, and here it is, somebody wrote it for me, this is what it's going to say, that we will, oh, we're going to continue welcoming refugees. But what it didn't say to us that we're sitting here was why? What, what, what was the emergency? It should have been done long before, you had three months to do it. And why was the confusion over whether it applied to cities, counties, and states? A city is part of a county, is it not? A county is part of a state, is it not? And a state is part of the United States. The executive order applies to everybody, even a citizen of that city. And it wasn't about opting in or opting out to being a welcoming city. Of course, we welcome people, but we welcome them on our culture, our terms, our constitution. And a lot of our government people are listening to government advocates of their own agendas. The United Nations controlled a lot of this and sent people, without anybody's knowledge, into the darker night, into the small cities around America. And what the President is saying in that executive order is, we want you to take the responsibility now to say, "We will not accept refugees any longer unless certain guidelines." Now, he didn't say it, but the first one ought to be assimilation to our culture, not theirs. But if you read, and I'm not, my time's up, but I have three months' worth of information about that, that we could read sometime. And sometimes I find it in the Reader Magazine or the Omaha Star, because we don't err in error. No discussion on that. It was bing, bang, boom, we got to pass this today. And then, two days later, the information comes out in the World Herald. But again, it was from a welcoming standpoint, not from a legal constitutional standpoint. So I don't necessarily believe the best practices of all these people from outside of Omaha, that have oodles and gobs of money because they're tax-funded, tax-exempt, using my tax dollars against me? That's like the Chinese using my trade dollars against us. They're a communist country, where did they get all that money? Think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Anybody else wishing to share under citizen comments? If not, the Douglas County Youth Center report is next on the agenda, but Brad Alexander was unable to be with us this morning, and so we have pushed that back for one week. We will have that on next week's agenda. Which brings us down to legislative issues. Does anybody have anything under legislative issues? Commissioner Boyle.
I've received a letter from a taxpayer that makes a great deal of sense, something I thought about for a long time, I'm not going to identify who it is, but I've responded to him. And what he is talking about is the penalties that are paid by people who disagree, in his case, he disagreed with his valuation and appealed to us, and of course, we don't look at anything, we just blast 7,000 changes through, frankly, you know, I think I've gotten three through the, through the last time, and not, this is not condemnation, but no other commissioner brings any up. So I got two out of three done, and I don't mean to, I'm glad I got that, but appealing back some taxes. And anyway, this fellow appealed, he came to us, apparently, and we said, "No, no deal, BOE." And so then he appealed to, went to the assessor again, they said, "Absolutely not." Then he went to Turk, and he was there for two and a half years, and then they came back and said that he was wrong, and they assessed him a 14% penalty. And he's saying, he thinks the state should say, pay the same penalty, and that's not going to go, of course. I think what we ought to be doing is legislatively ask for repeal of that penalty, that a taxpayer who goes down should not be paying 14% on taxes that we find are, on property taxes particularly, it's really an insult. So I think we ought to be looking at that and at least discuss it and see what, what this is all about. I agree with them totally, that's, that's really an insult, that's adding salt to a wound.
I'm guessing this constituent may have written to all of us, because I-
Oh, you think so?
Well, I think I got a similar letter.
He's out on Parkwood Lane?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good, I didn't know that, he didn't copy everybody, okay.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Related matter, and I don't know if this is the same taxpayer or not, but I received a communication from someone who had appealed to Turk and prevailed, but, you know, they had to post their money, and when they prevailed, they just were refunded the money without interest. But if you don't prevail, you are penalized 14% interest, and their question was, you know, it's kind of a goose v. gander question, as that old judge used to say. If it's good enough for the state to have 14%, why isn't it good enough for the taxpayer to have 14%? And I think they're right, it should be a level playing field, it should be the same for both the taxpayer-
Yeah.
-and for the state on these appeals. And so I think going forward, we might entertain, I, I, bill introduction is done for this year-
Yeah.
...a bill perhaps next session that just says either you don't pay interest on either one, or they both pay the same interest. There's another bill that is referenced in Mr. Kelly's report that I think is a good thing, relative to the homestead exemption for disabled people. And we've been down this road a number of times. If you read the homestead exemption for disability checklist of what's disabled, it's a total hodgepodge, it makes no sense whatsoever. And we've had people in front of us who are on disability from the Social Security Administration, who don't fit into one of these bizarre hodgepodge categories, and so there's a bill in now that just simply says, "If you're disabled for purposes of Social Security, disability, or Medicaid, you're disabled for purposes of homestead exemption."
That's good.
That's a good, fair way to go. The Social Security Administration has been the disability business for a very long time, and they have reams and reams of how you qualify for disability, much better than this hodgepodge list that's currently on statute, and we, we should support that initiative.
Commissioner Boyle.
When I saw that, the only thing I want to be sure is that you don't have, those are the only people who qualify, because there are people who are disabled, who, from a doctor, that sort of thing, and they have, you know, a status as a person who needs assistance, or sometimes a person with a heart condition can't even recognize, you know, as being disabled. So I wouldn't want that to be limited only to people who've been-
No, it's an addition, I'm sorry.
Okay.
An addition to the existing list.
Okay. A hodge, an addition to a hodgepodge, okay. The thing I think we ought to be thinking about is not trying to add taxes that the state would pay if they're, if they're wrong. Frankly, I think the Turk would be pressured, you know, many times to, to go the other way, just so they wouldn't be wrong and they wouldn't have to pay the interest, I mean, they're, they're skellywags, pardon me. So anyway, I think what we ought to be doing is try to get the taxes, the penalty removed from the taxpayers, not added to the state, because I can hear all the people yelling, "We don't want to increase taxes." So let's just remove it, try to remove it from the people who are, who do not prevail before Turk. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Let me ask a question. I just want to clarify something, Commissioner Kavanaugh. So when your tax bill is due in April, if you don't pay it, because I'm protesting that I feel the value's too high to Turk, then I would have, I don't pay him for a couple of years because I'm debating that, hey, it's 50,000 more than it should be, the value on my home, that's when I'd have the 14% penalty. I think that's how it would work, if I'm accurate, and Tracy Yurk or Catherine Hall may even have a better way of answering my question, but I think they're saying, hey, you have to pay your taxes on time, or you have a 14% penalty. Now, they may reduce them down, and then I'd get a credit back. But I think there'd be a lot of us that might say, "Well, I pay my taxes now, you know, I'm going to appeal it," or whatever. That's what I'm thinking, maybe that 14% isn't fair to say they should get a 14% refund because, on the full amount, because the basic amount, it is due.
I, I see what you're saying. I guess my, and I defer to our county attorney on this, my understanding is that the 14% is due if you lose on a Turk appeal, but it's not due if you prevail on a Turk appeal. And I'm just saying, if it's due on one side of a, you know, this is all like a lawsuit. If you're going to pay 14% on one side of the lawsuit, why should the plaintiff only pay 14%?
Right.
And the defendant never pay 14%?
I tend to agree that if you have a lease and they can, I can terminate your lease with a 60-day notice anytime after the second year, you have a five-year lease, but I can terminate after the second year, you should have the same privilege as me, that you can terminate after the second year, and I'd put that in.
Should be the same.
Yeah.
And I think the IRS employs kind of a same, same on, on their appeals. I mean, I'm no expert on this, but I think that all we're talking about is a question of equity and fairness. If it's going to be 14% on one side of the equation, then it should be 14%, or it should be zero on both sides, I mean, either way, it should be the same.
But if you appeal, and maybe I'd say, hey, I should get something, well, if I get something, I've saved having to pay my taxes for two years, even though it was only a $5,000 appeal.
Sure.
Starts to get, create maybe more people appealing-
Right.
-to win that $5,000 amount, you follow me?
I see what you're saying.
And I'm saving a lot of interest.
Right, right, right. And, and you know, it's something that, certainly for this year, it's not going to be a piece of legislation in the legislature, but between now and next year, it's something that maybe we should look at, because I think we're all getting kind of inquiries from different taxpayers relative to the same point.
Yeah, and seeing Marcos up there, who's way smarter than I am on legislative matters by far, even though I was lucky enough to serve in the legislature, you know, it's something for you to kind of think about a little bit and give us some input.
And I'll be calling on Marcos in just a minute, although for this particular conversation, I would like to bring in Tracy Yurk.
Tracy Yurk County Attorney's Office. So I'm not exactly sure which statute specifically we're talking about, I did see the letter that I think all of you got, I think Catherine Hall had a copy of it, but speaking in generalities, if you pay your taxes and go to Turk, you aren't paying a penalty because you already paid. If you chose not to pay your taxes, you, you would be paying a penalty for not paying. But if you've paid your taxes, you're not going to pay the 14% should you go to Turk and lose. And I, if you're thinking of trying to make parity between what a taxpayer is paying and what the, what the county would give someone if they got their taxes lowered, they overpaid, they should get money back, you want them to have interest, you should probably also consider that in light of, the treasurer is limited in investments that they can make, I don't know that they're making 14% on any of the investments that they're permissibly allowed to make, and so you'd be going in the hole, taking out of general funds, possibly to make up that differential, should you decide to make parity between the two. I can't tell you what the original motivation was in doing the 14% should someone not pay their taxes, it's quite possible it was incentivizing them paying the taxes and then going to Turk, but I cannot speak to that, I don't know that legislative history off the top of my head.
And what Tracy said, I think ties into what I'm saying, that you're avoiding paying your taxes because I'm appealing it and so on. So I think it would create kind of a serious problem for us if we were to try to do that. And I hear what you're saying, too.
So I think we're in general agreement, and it's something that we should study, because all we're really talking about is not incentivizing people not to pay their taxes, but equalizing the, the status of two essentially litigants in an accident case in controversy, which is the Turk appeal, so that they're treated the same. I also think that 14% seems to be kind of an arbitrary percentage and very high, except for credit cards, I don't know anything that charges 14% interest right now.
Creditory lenders can charge 36%.
There you go. The one that I think that, that is one that we could come together on is this disability, what it is in the legislature in 2020, and I, I'm certainly in favor of that one.
Before we move off the interest rates, if I, if I might suggest, this is not unique to Douglas County. This is obviously the same for every county in the state, and so anything that we want to do, I would think it would make sense to be in talks with NACO before we do something, because it's the exact same in every county statewide.
What I was going to suggest is to, we ought to be looking at a couple of things. One of, one is that maybe the- One is that maybe the county, the original county ought to be paying the penalty to the state. That kind of takes the pressure off. You know, but Turk, if I'm sitting there and I'm going to be, you've got, somebody says, "God, don't allow this appeal because, you know, we'll have to pay 14% taxes, you know, to whoever the taxpayer or something," Turk's thinking this. So then they, you know, and, you know, raising taxes, that is the biggest crime that ever occurred, according to some of the people in Lincoln, mostly the governor. And who incidentally came here one time and appealed his own taxes, I don't know if you knew that, and I granted him in front of everybody relief. So anyway, quite a few years ago, I was thinking about it the other day. Anyway, so what I was suggesting, we do some kind of a, first of all, we do our homework. How many appeals are there in Turk? I mean, there, maybe there's only a handful, when you're two or three or 400, I don't know how many they get. They certainly take their time. The other thing we ought to talk about, having them be here in Omaha and other places. We ought to have two or three different sites. If you're out in Binkleman, it's really a lot of trouble to come down to Lincoln to do that. And if you're in Omaha, it's a lot of trouble to go to Lincoln and do it, take the time and all the rest of it. I think we ought to get with the program and spread these things out a little bit, particularly since we're the largest city in the state. We ought to act for some, ask for some equal treatment. So anyway, that's what I think. This ought to be really explored and discussed.
I'm fine with exploring it more. When I think of the large dollar cases that have gone through the system in the last few years, be it Woodman of the World or Mutual of Omaha, when you're talking hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars of difference, suddenly-
Did they get penalties?
Well, if we start having to pay them 14% interest if they prevail, it's an even bigger burden than we're already facing.
Well, we ought to be penalized for doing that. It means we're not doing our job.
Well, if they bring in higher dollar lawyers than we've got, I mean, some, you know how these-
We're supposed to do a better job than that, really, honestly.
Ideally, it'd be great.
Our assessor has to be a hell of a lot better than that.
Okay.
And she's not.
All right. All right, thank you. I think we'll call that subject talked to death. Marcos, what else do you have to be sharing with us?
Sure, Marcos A. Martin, Douglas County Legislature. So the only other thing I was going to update the board is that next week I'll bring a resolution that pretty much has all the bills that we, at least at this point, based our priorities and what's been filed on our behalf, that we're going to, you know, that I would like the board at least to review so that we have those items to support, formally support or formally oppose, et cetera. But I'll send that out to you ahead of time. And there'll just be a handful of bills. And that's fine. I can add that, the disability bill to that list if you all would like that to happen. And again, you know, I always check, I always double-check everything against Sean Kelly's list and, you know, we're, so that we're all on board. But I'll bring that next, in the next board.
Thank you.
Hey, will you, and give us your opinion, too, Marcos. You know, if there's some input you want to mention about what's going on with the bill, you know, in that memo that you're, email you're putting out. That's great.
Yeah.
So we'll have that later in the week.
Okay. Yeah, sure.
Perfect.
Yeah, I'll send it out later this week. Yeah, probably tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yep.
Very good. Anything else under legislation?
And lastly, just say, you know, talking about this penalty matter. You know, I think your taxes are due April 1st. If you don't pay them on April 1st, you're going to have that penalty, whether you're appealing or not. I think it's a pretty slippery slope if we started to allow that if you're appealing, then you don't have to pay them for a couple of years. I think it could create a serious problem for us.
Indeed, indeed.
And trying to pay back 14% could be really challenging.
And the 14%, there's been some discussion on that. That's within at least my memory of when, I mean, that was back when inflation was through the roof. And I believe the interest was about-
Reagan was president.
Okay, well, I believe the interest was about 6% and it, and it was to people's advantage to not pay.
Because Mr. Boyle's an excellent Republican. It was during Carter's administration.
Okay.
If I could just, for political purposes. The only way that I would go forward on the 14%, if it's the same for both sides. And I think Commissioner Morgan raises a point where it shouldn't be a benefit to somebody. It should be the same if you posted the money, you get the, and prevail, you get the 14%. But not if you didn't post the money, you get the 14%. Not an incentive not to pay your taxes and roll the dice and try to get the 14%.
And are you saying it just on that amount that you maybe got your taxes reduced? You're getting the 14% off because you paid it?
My understanding is there's an amount of money that someone puts up, whatever that is. And if they prevail, they don't get any interest on that money that's been held kind of in escrow. Whereas if they don't prevail, they have to pay 14% on that amount. That's the difference. It should be the same on both sides of the equation. Maybe I'm not being clear here, but I'm just saying, if the money is put up and they prevail, they should get interest. If, on the other hand, they put up the money and they didn't prevail, they're going to have to pay interest. It should be the same on both sides, not different.
Okay. May I? Can I suggest we have a hearing on people who've been, again, people who've been through the sort of thickets of all of this? It'd be interesting to hear what they go through. And also, the other thing, there's no excuse for a two-year delay. I mean, that's absolutely outrageous that it takes two years for these people to figure this out. I mean, if they do so, they do it at their own peril and they run the risk of having this, Mutual of Omaha or somebody getting 14% on $65 million. That's their problem. I mean, if that's how the state's acting, they ought to be ashamed of themselves, which is how they are acting. So let's goose them and get them to respond and be responsible as a citizen.
If it takes the state years to push something through the system and we have to pay 14% interest because of, because of the ineptitude of the state-
Because our assessor screwed up.
Well, because it takes the state years to, I mean, they've created a system that they can't keep up with.
Well, that's their fault. I mean, if they're, I mean, we need to, we need to have a hearing on this, I think. That's what I'm saying.
Well, again, I'm going to say this is a statewide problem, and it's not unique to Douglas County. And I'm not sure why we feel the need to lead the state on this.
Maybe we should talk.
We need to be in touch with NACO.
Go ahead, Doug, but not before, not before we have evidence of what the problem really is. That's why I see we ought to have a hearing. And Douglas County could certainly take the lead on this. There's no reason, and if it doesn't pan out-
So we want to hold a public hearing for taxpayers who have lost?
Well, taxpayers who've appealed to Turk and have, let's get the evidence here and the information we need before we even decide to go to NACO. How do you, what do you get on at NACO and say, "We got an idea," and then what are we saying?
Let me ask you a question.
Please.
Do you think it'd be good to maybe, because the assessor's the one who is setting, you know, the values and working diligently at that with her people, do you think it'd be a good idea to have the assessor leave some input first? Maybe and hear what she has to say and her staff?
Well, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it could be, it could be okay that- You know, the difficulty is, I think you, others of us have been contacted, and I have been, by property owners, professional property owners in the city, the county, who have seen their valuations from two years ago turn right around and be raised right back where they were after they were reduced. And they've gone to great expense to have them challenged, and now they just kind of, and that's happened consistently with the assessor's office, with the previous assessor as well. Mary Ann and I compiled about an inch thick of people who had their taxes, they complained and they got them rolled back, and then they came right back at where they were before. That's why I think, I'm making my point, that the Board of Equalization is worthless.
Well, we saw that on the Dodge Street property that we reduced.
Yeah.
That the Board of Equalization went back, he came back.
Yeah. It doesn't make any sense for us to be involved because, first of all, we don't have time to even look at the results that come in. You know, when they come from the assess, the Board of Equalization, there's 3,000 of them. They come Friday afternoon and, or whatever it is, Thursday afternoon, and we have to vote on it Tuesday. And, I mean, they make an effort to give us information, but it's, you can't, you can't use it. Anyway, I think we ought to have a hearing about it and hear what's going on and then decide if we're even going to go to NACO.
I do need a point of clarification. A point of clarification, Commissioner Boyle, goosing, is that a legal term?
Yes, it is. Yeah. It's right up there with some others that I won't bring up.
The other, the other thing I would say is that 14%, I think the legislature, Marcos, should probably be given some consideration to saying, hey, that ought to be reduced because there was a time when mortgages were 12 and 16%.
Sure.
And today they're under four. So I think that should be reduced, no matter what, to a number that's 8% or whatever.
Or tied into the rate of a mortgage.
Something.
Okay, are we okay with this one?
I'd like to, I would like to get information from Turk, how many cases they hear a year and what they, what they were, when they were filed and when they're resolved.
I would ask either Catherine or Marcos to-
Thanks.
-track down that information for you.
Thank you.
Okay, I would like to move on to the rules changes. We've got two different rule changes for consideration this morning. One brought to us by Dan Ash and one by Theresa Yuric. And if I may, I'm just going to ask you to tell us what you're thinking here, Dan.
Sure. So this is just a small change to Rule 1. Reason being, if you read the, so it's the second paragraph, and I'll just read the, it's kind of a long sentence, I'll just read the last part. Well, it's on, I did not, but it should be in the backup. But anyway, the, "And the clerk shall countersign all warrants for money to be paid out of the county treasury." Then it lists some statutes, and then comma, "as well as schedule the board meeting dates for the year." And so to me, that reads like the clerk is the one-
Right.
-setting the meeting dates, and that's, that's not how it works. It's the board chair. So I, I just change it around, just put a period and then put-
And just strike through that one.
Right, and then just put the chair schedules the board meeting dates for it.
That's good.
Yeah. So that's, that's all that is.
Okay, fine. Further questions or comments on that?
Well, I'm so sorry. I saw, I got Commissioner Rogers, who was the second.
And Commissioner Kraft.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, could we please vote on G3?
Thank you. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Item G4, resolution adopting changes, Rule 2A. Theresa, what's you thinking here?
Theresa Yuric County Attorney's Office. So I had a question sometime in 2019 from a deputy sheriff, asking, the way the rule was previously written, it said, "The chair may appoint the sheriff to act as sergeant-at-arms." And the question that I was asked was, do, if something were to be occurring in the legislative chamber, should we wait until the board or the chair says, "I'm appointing you as the sergeant-at-arms. Now go take care of the thing that is happening." And I don't think that was the intent of the rule. I think the intent of the rule was that the sheriffs and sheriff's deputies would act, are appointed as the sergeant-at-arms, and would act should anything be happening in the legislative chambers that would require their attention. And so I said that I would bring forward to this body, just simply clarifying that from may appoint to the board appoints. And so that is what I have added. And then in addition, in speaking with Chief Deputy Wheeler, he asked if I could simply add a very generic last sentence that described the very basic duties of a sergeant-at-arms. And that is what I have added as the last sentence, which is simply that they maintain order and control the admittance of people into the legislative chamber.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes. The first change, I don't see that that makes much difference. The second change I am opposed to, the reiteration of public, anti-public sentiment by this board relative to people coming, participating, speaking, is something that's way out of line and is getting worse. This has a chilling effect. This is punitive language. It's warning people off. If you look at this boardroom, there are maybe a dozen people here. There's no problem with access to this boardroom. And so the sergeant maintain order and control of admittance of people in the legislative chamber is simply a punitive effort to dampen down public participation. It's been used by the chair of this board in the recent past by making it very plain that our made-up rules apply in an arbitrary fashion to people that we like and don't like, and we'll sic the sheriff on you if we don't like what you're saying. It's happened. This is a part and parcel of that anti-public participation, and it's unnecessary and uncalled for. And I oppose this arbitrary change in our rules to scare people off from coming, presenting to public forums. It's wrong. We shouldn't do it.
I move reject, Kavanaugh.
Excuse me, excuse me. I don't want to let this go downhill too fast. Commissioner Rogers? Yes, you will have the opportunity before we vote. Let me first hear from commissioners.
Well, I think there's, you know, the purpose of these, of the sheriff's people are, is to, I mean, I understand what Commissioner Kavanaugh was talking about, but they're here for, and they have, they will, and they've had to, and the city council as well, had to ask people to leave and escort them out and so forth. And it's, they have acted appropriately, as far as I'm concerned, in every case that I've seen. So I don't have a problem at all with them exercising their own judgment and all the rest of it. I don't know if I want to, you know, I guess, I don't see any reason to, you know, I don't want to have to, every, before we start every meeting, stand up and say, "We appoint you to keep order," and that kind of stuff. I don't want that to happen. But I think it's expected. I mean, you know, I don't know. If somebody comes in here with a baseball bat and starts walking toward you, I think you have the right, you'd hope the sheriff would stand up and say, "You're out of here," you know? So I don't know. I don't think we need to do this, but I think Mr. Kavanaugh makes a point. And I have been, at some of the public hearings, I have not been happy with the people, even though they were yelling at me to be escorted out. I mean, I just think it's part of what we should expect as elected officials.
Thank you. Other comments from commissioners on this? Then at this point, I would open up the floor to the public. Anybody that would like to comment before we vote, this would be your opportunity to do so.
While Larry's walking down, I just mentioned that it is always appropriate for citizens to come up for items on the agenda, and then we can respond to that citizen on discussion always, as long as it's on the agenda.
Thank you. Larry?
Yeah. Name, Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. Mr. Morgan, you and I have had our differences about the rules, and when you can comment. And once again, the public should be able to come to these bodies as citizens with the right to speak, without being threatened of removal. One of, one of the times I was removed with, the term was intercession, or I don't remember. But the type, type of term you would apply to a juvenile that's behaving badly in school. An intervention, yeah. Excuse me, the family fathers didn't give you that authority. But you remember, most of you know what the shell game is in the circus days. The game's a skill and chance. Well, here we are, shifting the responsibility for law enforcement and maybe the accountability onto a deputy sheriff. Excuse me, there was already laws in force that I can't misbehave badly. You couldn't arrest me as a citizen. You can call the police. They're right there. You don't have to have a law enforcement be the sergeant-at-arms. A sergeant-at-arms should be one of you people because you're the one that wants to remove a citizen from the forum. Don't put that guilt trip on them. That pits him against me. And I like my law enforcement people. But every time I come in here, I have to worry about, "Am I going to embarrass that poor man?" Or the one back there? That's not who should be embarrassed. You should be embarrassed, and the mayor should be embarrassed. This is not the kind of rule that, without spitting it out in plain language, the citizens are going to take offense to it. Just like that statement the other day on public television that I watched, these hearings. They want his head on a pike. Good Lord, people, that was the French Revolution. Let's don't do that here.
Thank you, Larry. Although I've got to say, I don't see this as shifting responsibility at all since the deputy is already our law enforcement. I see it simply as clarifying, not shifting. So, okay, further comments? Could we then please vote on item four, G4?
Motion passes four to two. Commissioners Kavanaugh and Boyle voting no, all their commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. We do have need of, oh, Commissioner Boyle?
I think, I, this provision where we allow taxpayers to come down and say whatever in the world is on their mind and talk about the United Nations and so forth, I think it's totally inappropriate. And I don't know what other government body allows people to come down and shoot off their thoughts at elected officials. For what purpose? You know, I mean, I guess it was to let us know they didn't approve of what happened. So, you know, the, and I'm not going to speak to what was said, but I am suggesting that we stop, stop this foolishness of the, allowing people to come down and talk about fleas or whatever it is they want to talk about.
or whatever it is they want to talk about. I think it's time-consuming, it's also very damaging to the public, the conversation that's to take place in the public sector when we allow people to say things that are not true, that are inaccurate, and just don't, don't follow, you know, they don't, I mean, there's plenty of room to set the record straight, and we're not allowed to speak. So I'm proposing we get rid of the public free-for-all that occurs when, just we had today, that's just about enough for me. I mean, I was thinking about walking out, and I was thinking about trying to get up again with a different chair and speak as a citizen, but I've been, you know, shut off here on time, and I'm not trying to break the rules. Anyway, I'm proposing that we have a public hearing on doing away with this public hearing, okay? So let's have a hearing, I don't want to do anything while they're gone, I don't want to get accused of not doing something in public. So let's set the next agenda, let's discuss doing away with this, the public, the free-for-all that takes place where we're not allowed to speak.
Very good.
Okay?
We will, we will do that.
It's got to stop, I think.
We will have that conversation on the agenda next week.
Okay, good deal. Thanks.
I am not aware of anything else to be handled at this morning's meeting. We do have need for an executive session for both litigation and potential litigation. And the county board, at least some of us, will be touring corrections after our executive session this morning. And again, this is still an open meeting, I, Mr. Esch said he probably will be joining us or having somebody join us for this tour this morning. So a little bit later this morning, we will be taking a tour of the jail. I assume that you're still on board with that, Mike? Okay, very good. I, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session for, for purposes of litigation and potential litigation. Okay, further questions or comments on this? Then could we please vote? And one more time, this is for, to discuss litigation and potential litigation.
Motion passes six to zero.
And you're a yes, Commissioner Boyle?